Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of April 17, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of April 17, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All council members are here. Is there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to reviewing the projected agenda. It's on the dais here. Any changes to the projected agenda? All council members are here. Seeing none. Changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Review of public engagement opportunities. Seeing none, we'll go on to, there we go. Arbor Day celebration Saturday, April 28 from 10:00 a.m. till noon at the Pioneer Cemetery. Help us plant trees and shrubs. Main Street celebration Saturday, April 28 from noon to 3:00 p.m. Celebrate the completion of the Main Street enhancement project and rediscover Main Street. And last is the Bothell Youth Court five-year anniversary celebration Sunday, April 29, 3:00 p.m. at McMinimans Anderson School, Haynes Hall. Good ones. Let's see, so next is the special presentation. We have a certificate for... Thank you. Taigen Chi, are you here? Awesome, okay. I'm gonna come down there and give this to you. Next is the special presentation. We have a certificate for... Thank you. Taigen Chi, are you here? Awesome, okay. I'm gonna come down there and give this to you. So I'm just gonna introduce this and then Councilmember McNeil is actually gonna take it from there, but we got this award for you. It's for the achievement as champion of the 2018 Drive Chip and Putt National Competition for Boys Ages Seven to Nine. We're very proud of that. It's totally awesome. Yeah, congratulations. He's gonna see me back from C, but he'll tell you something.
So I had the opportunity to meet Taigen last year when we played basketball together. I had the opportunity to coach Taigen and I want to tell you how proud I am of you, of what you've accomplished and what you give inspiration to all the other kids in the North Shore School District on what they can do. You should be very proud of what you have done and I'm so proud that you're a part of our community, so thank you so much for everything that you've done and stay strong and keep getting those good grades, okay? Super proud of you, buddy. Come up here and give me a hug.
All right, next we have a proclamation. This is a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, God, my eyes aren't doing good tonight, Jay Sterling Morton proposed that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and was the year when the Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas 2018 is the 146th anniversary of the holiday, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious top soils by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and renewal. And whereas the Bothell Parks and Recreation Board will be celebrating Arbor Day on April 28, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. with the tree planting within Pioneer Cemetery. Oh, it's a double dev. This was an announcement, too. Okay. Now therefore, I, Andy Rayo, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2018, as the official celebration of Arbor Day. Is there somebody here to receive it? Okay, great. You are?
My name is Mason. I'm from the Parks and Recreation Board.
All right, great. If anybody didn't hear that, that's Mason from the Parks and Recreation Board.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for doing the celebration. My pleasure.
Okay, next on the agenda is the council committee reports and the city manager report. How you doing over there? No report?
I'm doing great, but I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmembers, do you have committee reports? Councilmember McColl?
Thank you. And I attended the Park and Recreation Board meeting and I'm happy to tell you that Roger Smith again will serve as chair. And for the capital facilities plan, Mason Thompson will be the representative from the board. And thank you, Tracy, for your work with the board. And moving forward, we'll be looking forward to having our capital facilities plan process in place. The second one is, as you've mentioned before, Mayor Ream, it will be the ribbon-cutting event for the celebration of the opening of Main Street, which is the 28th of April from 12 to 3:00. Speakers, hopefully some of you, and then entertainment, let's see, then there will be a bouncy house and also we'll have at 3:00 happy hour for all the restaurants. So I hope that you'll come from 12 to 3:00 and then enjoy our restaurants throughout the evening. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew?
Yes, I'll talk about the Regional Services Subcommittee for the medic one levy. We talked about two initiatives that we're gonna be proposing to add on to the levy or just bring it in. One is a vulnerable population to where we're noticing that there are population, part of our population is vulnerable and more susceptible for cardiac arrest and no one doing CPR because they don't know it. So right now, we're trying to get out, go out, meet some of the people, find out who are the vulnerable population and how can we address that. So we're gonna be moving forward with that if the levy passes, obviously. And then the other is, it's called mental wellness. I spent 42 years in prehospital medicine and I've probably seen things that nobody else wants to see and rightly so, but it takes a toll on you. And we've never really done anything for our firefighters and our first responders when it comes to mental wellness. So we're gonna look into that and try to do a little bit more because we'd rather keep the employees than lose the employees and retrain somebody. So those are the two things that we're doing right now and it looks good. We're gonna find out more. It has to go to the Finance Subcommittee to where we can find out if we can afford to do it. So that's what we have to report there. Thank you.
I don't have a council committee report, but I just wanted to add, so I know a fire inspector and he told me that, you know, he went into doing inspection because of that, because it was so traumatic to him mentally. And he said that either you're kind of a, you know, you got some mental issues if it doesn't bug you what you see on a day-to-day basis as a firefighter. And that always is kind of like sunk in, but that's not, it looks pretty glamorous and everything, but there is a mental toll that has to be endured and it just depends on the human being, how they can, they take it, so.
Well, everybody's different and I was told one time, when you get into the fire service, you're like a 55-gallon drum that just got opened up. Some people, that drum's gonna get full a lot quicker than others.
Yeah. All right, well, that was my committee report. Deputy Mayor?
Okay, I have a few. To begin, the King County members of the Transportation Policy Board met to vote for the 12 projects that will go forward for the regional contest for federal transportation dollars. Quickly, it doesn't really impact Bothell. We didn't submit for the King County portion. We submitted for Snohomish County only, so doesn't really impact Bothell. And then, let's see, just wanted to report that I've joined the North Shore School District Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Task Force. We had our first meeting, which was basically just introductions and talking about the process and consensus building. And then, let's see, I attended PIC for the first time, but I think I'll let Councilmember McNeil report on that one. And then, at the Puget Sound Regional Council Transportation Policy Board meeting, we approved streamlining for PSRC and Wash Dot Coordinated Grant Programs for Special Needs. Basically, what that does is just eliminate duplication of efforts and save everyone time and money, so it's just more efficiency related. And then, we recommended the adoption of the Regional Transportation Plan. The SCA Caucus, which I just became chair of, did have comment particularly about park and rides and the need to put more emphasis on the fact that we, park and rides are most people's access to transit and it has to be addressed and we need more effort to be put toward that. So that was our biggest ask when we discussed it. And then, the East Side Transportation Partnership, we had a presentation on the foundations of growth management planning. It gave the history and reasoning behind the urban growth area, the Growth Management Act of 1985, and the updates in 1992 and 2012. Talked about the Growth Management Planning Council, which is led by the King County Executive. They set the rules for adoption and ratification of countywide planning policies. I didn't know any of this, so I actually learned quite a bit. They talked about the process for updates and target setting. And then the Regional Growth Strategy, which sets countywide targets and helps cities determine where the growth should go. I think the important takeaway is that the targets are really a policy statement, which means they can tell us what they'd like to see us do, but ultimately, it's an elected official determination. And then there was a brief presentation by Metro Connects, which presented on their proposed networks for 2025 and 2040. They talked, it was a lot about the methodology because everyone wants to know how they got to their end result, but the end, really, what they determined was the preference amongst users was for frequent service over express or local service. And so that's what they'll be aiming for in their next rounds for 2025 and 2040. And I believe that's the end of my council updates.
Councilmembers Orange? Oh, you weren't ready?
No, no, that's, I was taking notes. I can catch up later. LTAC got to meet for the first time since I joined the committee today and that was very enjoyable. It was really encouraging to see the team that has shaped up for directing how we brand and how we put Bothell out there using social media. There's a huge science to social media and looking at analytics. So Danae's got a great team that are on everything from having appropriate photography to looking at what the demographics are, who the population that are going to respond. I understand Germany is one of our big international groups that is interested in Bothell, so it's a learning experience for me to just see who all is attracted to Bothell. The one thing that I did, because we're gonna be talking about Street Sense, right, coming up, the one thing that I did clarify and get to clarify and was very appreciative of is that Street Sense will be supporting us for a year after, you know, it's the projects all put together, but then we can bring in and use, okay, I've just done a brain dump and I use them. I can look at my notes. Hang on a second. WordPress. That was not complicated. WordPress can come in and we can use tools like WordPress to keep that website up and current with activities that we've got going on and how we want to change out and bring in photography that's going to be meaningful and not look dated. So I'm very hopeful for all the things that LTAC's focusing in on.
Councilmember Wilson?
Nothing to report at this time.
Sorry about that. I thought you did. Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Apologize in advance. I'm gonna be kind of all over the board here because winging it, my computer went down, but NPRSA, the North Shore Parks Recreation Service Area Board met. We had a pretty robust discussion around where we are today, how organized we are, and making sure that we move into the future electronically and getting the documents stored in a manner in which we can all access them when we need to access them. We also had a discussion around the budget and looking forward at the budget, the things that we need to be focusing on financially. And we also, as an action item, asked the board to come back with ideas on what they want to work with in the future. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have some information on what we're gonna be trying to focus on. But I think the biggest takeaway from that meeting was the budget and making sure that we're being fiscally responsible and we look at the facilities as a whole. ETP and Seashore had similar presentations this month. Deputy Mayor covered the growth management item that was presented at both of those. Another one that was presented was Metro Connects and talking about the vision for Metro Connects, rapid ride, you know, how many lines, 26 lines by 2040, how frequently those rides are gonna operate. Interestingly, some of the information that came out of the presentation for Connects was similar to the presentation for, at the 522 meeting. And the takeaway that I come up with is there needs to be more of a robust discussion around the timelines of how long it's gonna take to go, as an example, from Bothell to the Link Light Rail off 145th and how those times are gonna be managed as far as seven minutes, 10 minutes, et cetera. So both the 522 committee had a discussion around that as well as folks at the last Seashore meeting. There was also a little bit of discussion around the, from 2040 to 2050 vision. And as we move from 2040 to 2050, they're starting the process and discussions about the population growth in our area, talking about 5.8 million as the population, 3.8 million jobs with 2.4 million households. So we're getting bigger, we're growing, we're growing rapidly in our region and making sure that we have the proper infrastructure and transportation systems in place is gonna be important. The Regional Law and Safety Justice Committee, in this meeting, we had quite a few presentations around youth programming and the benefits of youth programming within individual communities and how communities can work together regionally and provide programming for inner-city kids through sports, camps, activities. Auburn is doing some really cool programming with partnerships with their schools as well as local nonprofits and faith-based groups. So as that conversation continues, I hope to bring some more additional information back to council and forward on some of the presentations once they become available through the committee so that you can all take a look at some of the things that they're doing. We also had a brief discussion around the police shootings. I sent some information out about the reports that the executive, King County Executive was working on, EnQuest Report. I don't have any additional information for you tonight on that, but we probably will be hearing more about that in the future. The PIC Committee, Public Issues Committee, there's quite a few topics on there that I wanted to discuss, but unfortunately, I lost my notes, but I do want to briefly cover a few of those tonight. There were some very interesting conversations around the school sightings and how cities are working with school districts on citing those schools and when bond measures and levies and how that all comes about. Interestingly, Kirkland has mentioned their partnerships with their school districts and working fields and other issues around bond measures. So I think there's an opportunity there for Bothell to hear and learn from some of the other cities on what they've done with their partnerships with schools, so I was super excited to hear about that. There was a pretty good discussion around the Regional Growth Centers. Everything is staying intact, but the important message that I took from the conversation was we need to continue our work, our planning around our growth center and it's very important that we do do that because there are going to be timelines that are gonna be put in place. That means if we're not prepared for it, we could potentially in the future lose it. So we really want to make sure that we stay focused on the regional growth centers. The Veterans and Seniors Human Services Levy, we heard a little bit around that. Something interesting that came out of that was the capital project money that's available. And the first thing I thought about is our senior center, that we potentially could have some capital project needs there. So I will continue in that conversation on that as well. And the Regional Transit Committee selected a new appointment in this last meeting. And then there was some information that I sent council in the packet pertaining to the West Point Treatment Plant progress. I didn't have an opportunity yet to read that, but I'd like, I did forward that to council so they could read it if there's anything important on that. And I think lastly, I think that was it for me. Let me just make sure I've got them all. Okay, I think that is it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next is the visitor comment section. This is the part of the meeting where each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without the permission of the mayor. Have no sign-up sheets. Is there anybody here that wanted to give public comment? Seeing none. We're moving right along. Okay, the consent agenda, nothing's been pulled. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. They're not blinking over here. That helps. Go ahead and hand vote. All right, all those in favor of passing the consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye. Aye, opposed, pass, passes unanimously. We are on to New Business, AB 18-063, the Public Safety Update, and we have Tori, sorry, is it Brazidas?
Every time.
I know.
Brazidas.
Brazidas, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. The Assistant City Manager to provide a presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. Do you want me to switch it on my end? Yeah, so I'm good, but I think. I think there was something, I tried it earlier and the sound didn't work, so. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of the City Council. I am very excited to be talking to you tonight. This is the result of several months of work by a team of folks here at the city. We probably have about 20 to 30 who've been involved in preparing the information for you in this presentation. Special shout-out goes to the folks, Chief Cummings and her crew in police for some very thoughtful information and suggestions on police services, Chief Crone and his folks in fire. And then I also want to make a special thanks to the Finance Department, Tammy, Finance Director Tammy Shackman, and Senior Financial Analyst Ted Rainan have done an excellent job of making sure that the information we are presenting to you tonight for your consideration and review is accurate. So I really appreciate that, in the middle of budget season, too. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to give you an update on ongoing conversation that the council's been having on public safety services. This is in response to council's direction provided on October 17, 2017, back to staff to engage with the public and evaluate options to determine level and cost of public safety services to contend with increased complexity and strains on city resources. So the way we're gonna tackle that this evening is by breaking it up into a couple different sections. This is meant simply to be an introduction of the topic. So I'm gonna be covering what we mean by public safety, what that entails, some of the issues that we've discussed as going on in the departments, and then outline some operational needs and capital needs overall. But then, the purpose of this, at the end of the presentation, staff is really soliciting your reactions to this information, how you're feeling about it, how you believe it aligns with the community needs as you've understood them and heard them from your constituents, and then also next steps. Our team is prepared to do more research, gather more data that you're interested in. For example, this particular presentation doesn't include comparisons to other cities under the understanding that first, we would want to look at what you see as important to Bothell and not the comparison. So that would be a good next step, for example, but you'll see that in the presentation tonight. So yeah, reactions and next steps is what we'll be looking for at the end, but until then, it's just a, we'll go through the overview first. Okay, so the way we'll split this up, it's mostly me, so I'll be brief and to the point, but then it'll be, in the middle, it'll be our folks from Cocker Fantasy, starting out by outlining what do we mean by public safety. This is a word that has different meanings to different people, so talk, get a common terminology. Current state of public safety services. I'll outline some trends that we have going on in the operations of our public safety departments and I want to express my deep gratitude that our public safety departments are here and that our real experts are behind me. So as you have additional follow-up questions, they'll be prepared to answer those as well. Community feedback phase one is the first phase of research that our consultants at Cocker Fantasy have done for us to interview stakeholders in the community and begin to get a sense of some trends as to how people are feeling about these services and the current climate. Current needs is an outline of operational and capital needs from our public safety departments to give you an overall sense as to what is out there. And then, the most important part, council's discussion. All right, so what do we mean by public safety? This is primarily related to three departments in the City of Bothell. So this is Police Department, Fire Department, and the Municipal Court. As I mentioned earlier, though, you know, we've certainly had a lot of leadership in this effort from Police, Fire, and Court and also the Finance Department because of the budget implications, but there is a lot of support for this amount of personnel from other departments. So my thanks in addition to IS Director Joe Sherman and then also HR has been great in public works. So this, it's a broad portfolio that touches all pieces of the city. The most important thing here is that we're specifically talking about pieces that are funded by the general fund. So as you know from our budget conversations, there's a lot of different pieces of the budget and for those following along at home, the piece of the budget you would look for for public safety is the general fund. This is a lot of our undesignated revenues. Personnel, there are 345.1 FTEs in the City of Bothell at the end of 2017 and 162 of them were in those three public safety departments. So this is a huge piece of our work. That is 47% of all the people that are funded by the general fund, all the FTEs. In terms of expenditures, it is almost 70% of the general fund spending is in our public safety departments. So this is a huge piece of the municipal services that the City of Bothell offers. So I wanted to outline a couple of overall trends in population and the strain that these services are placing on our current resources. So this chart is not news to anyone here, but population has grown in the past 10 years in the city. This is important because I'll be benchmarking a lot of other public safety data against it throughout the presentation, so if you think of that trend line, you'll see a lot of other things tied to that. So while population is increasing, costs for the existing service are increasing as well. So this is the expenditures by department. So the police there is in yellow, fire is in green, and the municipal court there is in the dark orange. So you can see that costs for these existing services, just maintaining our current level, is increasing. So a challenge and one factor in this is that personnel, especially sworn personnel, has remained flat. So this chart shows a number of personnel in the public safety departments and the number of sworn personnel. So you can see in about 2014, there was, and then again, a little bit in 2017, there was some small increases in what was civilian staff. So civilian staff in public safety departments is often a cost-efficient way of using sworn personnel more efficiently, but the sworn personnel itself has not increased. Now what that results in, it's one of my favorite charts. This is a chart that shows the increases to overtime, so you can pretty much clock when the recovery started, right around 2011, 2012. And then what happened once we got busier in those departments and the overtime began to increase. So to understand this chart, I've paired budget to actuals for each department. So the blue is police overtime, budget to actuals. The oranges is fire, budget to actuals, and then the green is the two added together. And it, budget is the lighter color, actuals is the darker, so you can see them grow each time. time. So the short version is if you look at the, the green line chart at the top, that tells you the budget for overtime and then what actually happens to it. So I should note that the previous chart showed completely flat sworn personnel. This current council did invest in additional public safety personnel at the end of 2017. So as part of an overhire strategy to bring this overtime budget under control, there were three additional police officers authorized, three additional firefighters, and one additional dispatcher. But that isn't yet reflected in those numbers. So that was simply an overtime, that, that was to manage the overtime that you're seeing here, not for other purposes. So. These strains in the earlier slides that we've shown in the growth of public safety budget and the strains it's placing on current services was noted by Moody's in their credit opinion recently issued in December. And in this, it indicates the biggest challenge that the city, in order to continue the existing level of services, has been spending down reserves in order to do it. So that was the reason that council directed in October that we come back with a study further into this topic and some options to address it because right now, the current level of services is causing the city to spend down on general fund reserves. All right. For a little more detail in the three public safety departments, I will go briefly through some trends using the department's data as to changes in their services over the last five to 10 years or so. I'll start with the Fire Department. And again, if Chief Crone, if you hear me mischaracterize anything, please feel free to jump in. So one of the most interesting things we found with, so this is a, an all hazards department. Any, any peril you're in, the fire and EMS will probably be responding. And this, this includes everything from medical emergencies to fires to wildland training to vehicle extraction to, what else am I missing?
Anything that police don't go to, we go to.
Okay, there you go. And an interest, thank you. An interesting thing in this is that there's a very close correlation between population and incidents or calls for fire and EMS. So theirs is very closely tied together. We don't see quite the same correlation because of the complexity of cases in police. But this, this was an interesting correlation. But this is overall incidents in population for the last 10 years, and this is EMS calls in population. So very closely tied together. So when we talk about strains in existing services, this is a real challenge for them. Growth directly affects fire and EMS. And this is an interesting chart. So automatic and mutual aid is the assistance by other neighboring departments to calls in our area. So this chart shows both. This is both, automatic is where King County, I guess, has automatic, and Snohomish County has mutual aid. Mutual aid is where we can't get to something, so we ask for help. King County, it's whoever's closest is dispatched to go send it. So it's done automatically, but it's the same kind of phenomenon. What this chart indicates is that there are an increasing number of calls in Bothell that are answered by somebody else. And this is because of that changes in their level of service as per population. So there are a lot of calls in Bothell where a Bothell resident will call for a fire or EMS and won't be responded to by them. They'll still be served well, but not by our own fire and EMS. So another item for discussion. And I will say, I'm going to address for each department, just a quick overview of some trends affecting their operations, and then I'll tell you about the facilities that they operate out of. The information that I've made a note to gather for one of your upcoming meetings would be the response times overtime. That isn't, there's some difficulties in gathering that data because of the way it's either, there's two different ways to calculate it, and we like to do it the way that fire does their reporting nationally. So that will be coming at your next meeting, but that is something else. All right. So our Fire Department operates out of three stations. The one that if you have come to our July 4 pancake breakfast, you are familiar with, will be Station 42. This is the downtown headquarters station. So ability to have 10 dormitories, you can see this is the largest station in terms of, they call it apparatus, it'd be vehicles, but I'll say apparatus is the fire term. So you can see that this is the, the one that has the most apparatus out in the community and responds to the population in this area. Yeah. So this is 42. And just really quick, this is 44. So this, Station 44 is up on 228 Street by the FEMA and Army Reserve Site. This was built in 1968, so it's celebrating its 50th birthday this year. You can see that there was an addition in the 80s. It has three stationed there right now, and then it cross staffs an aid car there. An aid car is two people, an engine is three, and it sends one or the other. So depending on the call, either, either piece will go out. And then really quick, Station 45, this is Canyon Park. So this is the one that you'll see on Bothell Everett Highway. It also has three firefighters at all times at it right now, and same concept. It's got an engine and an aid car there. So it's one or the other. As you can see, this one is built in 1985. I'll address this a little bit later, but a unique feature of 45, Station 45 is the semi-private dorms. So they, if you're familiar with a lot of modern office environments and a cubicle half wall, that is what they have, separating sleeping quarters. So this is a component of their, their being built in 1985. But that is a difficulty in hiring and employing female firefighters there, is that the, the dormitory environment is not private. So anyway, unique feature of 45. So I'll come back further in more detail about those, but that's just a, an overview. So moving briefly on to the Police Department. So Bothell Police Department then has been facing challenges of its own, but in a very different way. So obviously, their service is different. This is a law enforcement agency. So keeps the peace in the city of Bothell and quality of life and keeps people on their best behavior, I guess would be the short version. A lot of community relations involved in that work as well. So I'll have a little bit more information on their overall staffing in one moment, but the trends that they're seeing are related to the changing nature of law enforcement. So the effects of the opioid crisis is acutely felt here in Bothell. So you can see here a couple of our top 15 call types by hours required, theft and narcotics. And as Chief Cummings has spoken very well on this in the past, those are related to each other. So if you're stealing something, it's probably because there is a narcotics problem as well. So petty crime, property crimes, these things are, are the trend that the Police Department has seen, and we've seen echoed also through some of our community feedback in terms of current law enforcement problems. So this is fortunate in one way in that we don't have a whole lot of violent crime, but as you know, we're always working really hard to make Bothell the most excellent place to live that we can. So that's still an issue that, very high priority. So you can see there are suspicious circumstances. There's a lot of others that also are related to that. As the nature of law enforcement has changed from, to become more complicated, it involves more calls related to mental illness and drug abuse and homelessness and social services issues. The hours on calls and casework has increased. So this is straining our Police Department resources, the increasing complexity of the cases that they're dealing with. So the, that's what I heard over and over again from the Police Department, the nature of law enforcement has changed. And this is the video I'm hoping Laura can help me with.
...
Oh.
They want more training.
So this is just, I, I wanted to show this as a way of saying something I've been very impressed with in talking with our Police Department is the innovative nature of the solutions that they are already pioneering to some of these changing problems that they see in law enforcement. So I wanted to show a quick clip from a King Five video.
More involvement with mental health professionals.
We get to say, you know what, I'm a counselor, I'm not a police officer. I don't really care necessarily what you did or didn't do.
People like Susie Kroll.
I've had some significant training with law enforcement, and then I'm also hostage negotiator trained. So there is a lot of de-escalation techniques and tools given in those types of trainings.
Kroll works with multiple departments responding alongside officers when someone is in crisis.
This is the future of law enforcement, without a doubt.
In Bothell, she helps in emergency situations, but also does follow up.
It's the default to call 911. So we had one lady that we were working with, and she had called the Police Department or 911 like 60 times within, I think, a two or three week period. Those calls don't come in anymore. That individual is now plugged into counseling services.
Officers in the department have embraced her help and advice.
That's a huge win for, for cops because that's really what the ultimate goal is, is, you know, we're trying to help people out there.
And we see such amazing results when you have mental health professionals embedded with law enforcement. So that when they go out, they're actually able to quickly ascertain what the real problem is.
There is hope.
Back at the Raleigh State Center, Monka Dingra says they're expanding funding for the use of mental health professionals with police. They want them in every department, bringing together those who need help and those who have come to help them. Amy Moreno, King Five News.
...
They want more training, more involvement with mental health professionals.
We get to say, you know what, I'm a counselor, I'm not a police officer. I don't really care necessarily.
All right. I just have to go to the next. There we go. All right, continuing on. So that is simply to illustrate that something I have also been very impressed with in spending a lot of time with your public safety departments is the innovative nature of the solutions that we are pioneering here, and this applies to police, fire, and court. So I just wanted to highlight that because we have the recent news story on it, that that is something that Bothell is a leader in. The Navigator, which is the, Susie Kroll is our mental, embedded mental health professional with our Police Department, is funded through a King County mid grant through the city of Shoreline. So we've been partnering with them on that. But the, the program has had a great reception in our Police Department because of the culture that I, Chief Cummings has cultivated there. So just very impressive and a really great opportunity to be pioneering some new things in how we take on law enforcement. So the other police trend, so one police trend is increasing complexity. The other one is less time for proactive work. So as they have gotten busier and the dispatch calls are getting higher, it's, it's increasingly difficult to spend time on things that are officer-initiated. So when there's a call for service, it's, it's that you're on patrol and you're sent to something. When it's officer-initiated, it's that you're out and you see something, and you stop and look into it. So those are sort of two different ways that police could start working on something, and it has placed a, a challenge on that area of it. So you can see here are some data from the Police Department, how dispatched calls are going up, and that leaves less time for officer-initiated. This one I thought was interesting. This is calls by call source. So here you can see as well that the lines have actually crossed. And so this is where dispatch calls are now outpacing the calls, are, outpacing the officer-initiated calls. So they've crossed, and now we're getting more pressure from dispatch, dispatched calls to give less time for the proactive. There was a wonderful study in 2016, the ETOC study on patrol efficiency indicated the ideal balance between reactive and proactive time by a patrol officer is about 50/50. And our patrol officers right now are doing about two thirds reactive. So if you can imagine a day, like any of us, if you go from one thing to another, to another, to another, it doesn't leave you a whole lot of time to stop and think. So the pressure that this places on proactive work, for example, means that we have no choice but to respond to calls at a drug house, for example, but less time to be thoughtful about how to shut that house down in the first place. So that is the nature of the challenges on, on the growth of reactive policing by, because we are responding to the 911 walls that come in, 911 calls that come in, we don't have a choice, and the crunch on proactive work. All right. And since we're addressing each facility that the public safety departments work in, this is the police station. So this is downtown Bothell, right across the street, built in 2000. It had a server room upgrade in 2009, but otherwise pretty original. It's about 38,000 square feet across two buildings, the main building and then a smaller one. It has 91 employees operating out of this. It has about 40 police vehicles and 66 parking spots. I just mentioned that because in this area, the parking can be a bit of a challenge. So this looks like it's doing all right, but as, as the city continues to grow, we'll keep an eye on it. Bothell Municipal Court is our third public safety department. And I should say, it's not actually a department. This is the judicial branch of the city of Bothell. So that is, that is different. I'm using the term unintentionally, but it, it is a third branch of government. It is the judicial branch. But it is where, where items that originate in the city of Bothell and public safety go to. So it's involved as part of our system. Couple of interesting trends for them. One of the most striking is the increase in probation workload. The downturn in 2016 was a change in how we provided the service. We went from having a contractor to a rather abrupt contract termination and a transition to taking that in-house. So it's sort of a falsely low number in 2016, but generally, the trend line has continued to go up. So they're continuing to see growth in this area of probation cases. And the reason I bring this up is that we have one probation officer, and the best practices for this industry indicate that one probation officer should be monitoring about 100 to 120 low risk probation cases. And so our one probation officer has 345, I believe, low to high risk probation cases. So in the world of municipal court, this is a particular strain for them. Court is seeing a similar increasing complexity of cases that the Police Department is. So this was an interesting theme that cut across the two. And I should note that some of this complexity is coming from the changing nature of the problems that we're seeing, but some of this is also coming from legislative and judicial sources. There's a lot of privacy protections in Washington State, and that's, you know, that's a policy decision. Those are great for individuals. That also can be a little challenging. What used to be something that could take an hour could take several hours now. And again, we are happy to offer excellent services that comply with all the laws. It just changes the nature of how we do those operations. So that's what we're seeing with the increasing complexity. It's the changing nature of the problems, and then also legislative and judicial requirements on cities. So you can see here, cases versus hearings. Cases are in orange, and gray is the hearings held. So there used to be a lot more hearings per cases, and then as the case count has grown, court believes this dipped to be somewhat temporary. There's a lot more hearings per case that they're starting to see again. So there's that one. And then the other one is felonies filed as misdemeanors. So this is our felomenas, as they have been called. So this is the growth of those over time, although it has dipped recently due to some decisions by, I'm turning to our city attorney as I say this, due to some decisions by King County and Snohomish County, those will be coming back to the city of Bothell in the future. Is that right?
They very well, very well could be. It's then the determination as to whether we want to charge them as a felomena or push that back to the county.
So this is a upcoming risk to increasing the strains on the court that they wanted to, to mention. The Municipal Court Building, this was completed as part of the project for the police station. So this was a renovation of former bank building, completed in 2000. It's about 6,000 square feet and has one courtroom. So this is an area in which we've looked at the facility as well. All right. I'd be happy to take any questions or pass it over to our friends at Cocker Fantasy for a report on their first round of community feedback, but I'd leave that to...
There we go. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. First of all, I know you talked about the Navigator being Susie Kroll, and she's the mental health professional, but you didn't really state that we will probably not be able to continue?
Yes.
So would you just let us know about how, what, what our needs are there?
Absolutely. My apologies. So that is funded through a one-year grant from King County Midmoney to the city of Shoreline that is then shared with Bothell. So unless there is additional funding, it is grant funded right now, and we would be seeking additional funding in the future from ASOR.
And do we have information, Tori, about how many, what her caseload is, or?
Yeah. So I, I chatted with the folks who are working with her in the Police Department, and in the, let's see, she started in December. So she hasn't been with us for very long. And in that time, she's had 130 contacts by herself, and she is a part-time position. So it's one person funded part-time that has helped 130 people, and I believe that So it's one person funded part-time that has helped 130 people, and I believe that included 13 cases. Okay, so starting in June of 2017. So one person working part-time has helped 130 people in mental health-related situations with the police department. Something that's interesting about that program is, I think it has a sort of inherent triage nature to it, that if you are dealing with the police department, you're having, or the fire department frankly, you're having a bad day. And so we're finding a lot of people in crisis through those departments anyway. So yes, 130 contacts, and I believe there were 13 mental health first aid. Yeah, so people in truly emergent crisis have been helped as well.
I think that's a very important story to be told, because I think that what we're really seeing is if we can just, if we can address the mental health issues, we can prevent many of these incidents getting out of hand and escalating to a point where there's greater problems to be seen. So that's a really big story to be told.
Deputy Mayor?
First of all, excellent presentation. Thank you so much. So I had a couple of questions in regards to the automatic and mutual aid. I wondered, so the chart showed that we're increasingly dependent on mutual aid, it sounds like, and I wondered if there was any backlash from that with our partners, the ones who are saving us.
No, actually, and I've been keeping very close watch of that and asking the chiefs in the area if there's any issues with that, and they confirm there is not at this time. We understand that. There was a spike in 2013 when the calls went way up. The auto aid really kicked in. We just pretty much dropped all the borders around here. So it's great for the citizens, but what it did is when we, essentially, when we're busy on a call, we can't respond immediately. Instead of waiting for one of our units to get there or come from a remote location, they'll send the closest unit to, so that's why we get the auto aid coming in. And it's just, it has to do with boundaries and call reliability, but no, to answer your question, we've, I just checked in last week with Woodinville, and they're fine with what's going on right now.
And I assume sometimes we return the favor?
Oh, yeah. Definitely.
It's not just one way.
No, no, it goes both ways, but clearly, right now, it's about a, it's probably like a 60/40 or 70/30 in our favor with that. And that's concerning to me, but that's why I reach out to the fire chiefs in the area and make sure that they're okay with what's going on. And they assure me they're fine with it right now. In the future, you know, if it keeps going, that trend, we may have to have this discussion. And I told them, let me know if it does get to that point, but right now, we're good.
Okay, that's good to know. And then I know that we've been told this before, but I wondered if you could remind me what the percentage of calls are with EMS versus fire?
Sure. We hold really steady at about 75, 76%, about 3/4. It goes between 73 and 78% a year for a long time.
So that's EMS calls?
EMS calls, right.
Okay, and fires the difference?
Yeah, the fire, actually, fire is 3%, 4%, not a very high percentage of actual fires that we go to. The rest is kind of, it could be technical rescue, hazmat, anything else that's not EMS is kind of in the other category.
And that steady, it's not changing with the advent of sprinklers and all the rest?
Nope, no, it's pretty steady on that.
Okay, good to know. And then your, the chart that you showed with the top 15 calls for police, it's really good information. It would be interesting to me to have, kind of over time, what the, how those have changed. I, at my last council conversation at the library, what really struck me, Chief Cummings was great and attended that council conversation, and one of the things that came up that I think it actually got a gasp from the people attending was that we had no new police officers in the last 10 years. So it would be interesting to me to see what those trends are in terms of, I believe, I have no reason to doubt that the theft of narcotics has gone up, but it would be interesting to see where we started from. And then the other question that I had was, let's see, gotta follow my train of thought. The probation workload, so the cases, the number of cases are increasing, that's a trend.
Yep.
And we have one person that should be doing 100 to 120 cases, doing 320?
I believe it's 345. I can verify that.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that I heard that correctly, because it seemed startling. I think that was all my questions. Thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
Councilmember Olson?
Thank you. So do you know if there's a particular area or portion of Bothell that uses the auto aid more than others?
Well, it's really the borders with Woodinville on that side, south, and Kirkland, and then North Shore on our, on our western boundary. And it's, we actually have an agreement, I don't get too far in the weeds tonight, but with Kirkland, for instance, down south of the river, most of our calls are on East Riverside Drive, which Station 42 is the closest unit to, and we get there really quick. Further south of that, the dispatch or the response times get a little longer, so we have an agreement with Kirkland right now, and it's essentially a closest unit to, but because there's, because of the time lag, it just takes us longer to get there, we've agreed for Kirkland that they will respond to emergency, significant emergencies, heart attacks, stroke, working fires, they'll come immediately, first thing. If not, a low-acuity call, like an automatic fire alarm, or a fall victim, or a life alert, or something that's not completely emergent, we'll respond to in that area. So we're covering our own area, but the response times are just a little bit longer than we'd like to. So that's typically where it is up on the hill, on Woodinville there, is there's response. They're actually really close, their station happens to be very close to that area with the annexation we had a few years ago. And so they, with the automatic aid, first closest unit, they just go, because they're closest unit a lot of times. But like I say, we've been, I've been keeping track with the fire chiefs to make sure we're good on that and everything's good. And yeah, the same thing applies to the north. It's not, the automatic aid, mutual aid isn't as a big a factor on our north border. We seem to do pretty good with that, but we do occasionally have Snow 7 or Snow 1 come in, not very often, not nearly as much as we do our King County partners. Did that answer that? Was that?
Yes, that was directly what I was looking for. And then, it was one of the first slides, I think, it was talking about the 29.1 million. Is that per year or per two-year budget, or?
I believe that's per year. That's the spending in the general fund on public safety. Yeah. Yes, that's per year.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Zornis?
A quick question. This may not be the right spot to be asking that, but I, this is a police question. Because I have family members in other parts of the country, they, they've been mourning the fact that their police departments cannot fund K-9 units and have said that K-9 units are declining across the country for funding. Is there any buzz within our own police department about having K-9 units available?
So yes, we have a drug dog, but there's been, over the last several years, we have addressed this many times in regards to tracking dogs. Right now, we're a little bit like fire in that way. When we need a tracking dog, we need, we have to call for mutual aid. And so the challenge with that is you, we simply do not have the personnel to be able to assign to a dog, because we are struggling on our reactive side in operations. But we've actually been kind of keeping track of, of the calls and how often we call to another department for this assistance, and when they're available, when they're not, and get a little running trend of that.
Just to make sure people understood, so we talked about felomeners, and I just, I don't think the general public has any idea what we were talking about when we talked about felomenas. So can we have a bit of an explanation of that?
I'll pass that to our city attorney.
And maybe a little about the history of it, and like how it kind of, the whole idea of a felometer became whatever it was in 2012?
Yeah, so under Washington law, there are certain anticip, what are called anticipatory offenses. So you can attempt to engage in theft, and you just aren't successful in the final product. Like if you run into a store and grab something and try to run out, you may not get out, but there's, that's a criminalized behavior as well for the attempt of it. And so during the Great Recession, there, because of the budget shortages, the counties weren't able to prosecute every crime that was filed to them. And so for low-level crimes, felon, class C felonies, some of them were referred to the municipal courts and the district courts to be charged as attempted crimes or solicited crimes. And one of those crimes was often drug possession, especially in lower quantities for meth, heroin, cocaine, all matter of controlled substances that were found in very small quantities, because the amount of time that it took the county prosecutors to review the cases, prosecute them, file them, was overwhelming their limited resources at the time. So in order to ensure that they didn't fall through the cracks, they asked a lot of district and municipal courts to file them as attempted crimes, thus making them a gross misdemeanor, which are within the purview of the court, because courts of limited jurisdiction is what they're called, the district courts and municipal courts have jurisdiction to hear misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors. So at some point when the economy recovered, we noticed, and I think you saw in the graph, especially in 2010, that's when we had our highest number of filings, and we had a tremendous amount of these, what we call felomenas, halfway between a felony and a misdemeanor. And one of the reasons that we were having such difficulty as well prosecuting them is that, for example, for a domestic violence assault case, the report would come in, and it would be two, three pages long with a felomenor, because it often involved a stop, it involved a search, it involved multiple people in the same car with multiple drugs, different kinds of paraphernalia. The amount of time it took, we would get cases that were this thick, that we had to spend the time to go through, decide who to charge what with, and then prosecute, prosecute those and parse those out. Very few of those were going to trial, but just the amount of time it was taking our staff to parse them out, review them, and get them charged was overwhelming our office. So eventually, we reached out to the counties and said, hey, we're no longer able to prosecute these even in the smaller amounts. We need you to ask them to, we need you to take them back and charge them correctly as felonies. And it's a recent decision with King County where they're facing the same issue, where they're being overwhelmed with a number of drug cases. And the other thing that they noticed, especially in Snohomish County, is that the recidivism rate is nearly 100%. So even when they were taking the felonies, charging them as felonies, because they were such low-level felonies, they weren't under Department of Corrections supervision, they weren't able to get the resources they needed in terms of treatment. And like I said, the recidivism rate was nearly 100%. So they've made the decision to no longer charge those low-level crimes. It's now we, as municipal court, and as a prosecutor's office, we have to decide if we're going to refile or start filing again those felomenas in our court to essentially make sure that, to the best of our ability, people that commit crimes are held accountable for it. If we decide to do that, and especially if we increase the number of police staff that we have, and they're able to then be more proactive, we assume that there's going to be a significant jump in those filings.
Thank you. I had one other question. For some reason, I thought we're funding another parole officer. Is that a dream I had?
My understanding, and I see our court administrator is here, thank you Courtney. My understanding is that we have our probation clerk assisting now, so we have a clerk who's been pulled in to help with some of that workload, but isn't a probation officer, and then the single probation officer.
Okay. All right, those are my two questions I had. All right, sorry, I don't mean sorry. We're ready to move on, I think, though. Are we ready? Okay.
Great, well, then I would like to introduce Chris Fawcett, partner at Cocker Fantasy. This group is helping us with research, community engagement, and potentially education later if the council decided to send something. But right now, it is all about listening and research, so I will hand it over.
Hello, thank you very much for having us. I wanted to take a minute to introduce a colleague that I brought with me, Vanessa Lenn. She's our research director at Cocker Fantasy, so she's been really active in this effort as well. We're here tonight, we're really honored to be here, we're really pleased to be able to help the city as you guys engage your community around these really important issues. And Tori asked me, before we go into really the meat of what I'd like to present, which is the stakeholder interviews that we just completed with your community members, just to give you a little sense of what we've been doing with you for the past couple of weeks since we've been on board. We've started by doing sort of a soft launch around the listening effort that we know that is really important to you as a council, to hear what your community thinks before you make a decision around these measures. And so we developed, worked with Barbara and the rest of her team, Tori and other staff at the city, to develop a webpage that can, we can drive people to, that has an online comment forum. It's very basic right now, because we wanted to hear a little bit more about issues and priorities and needs for the city, prior to putting too much up there. But there is a launch page for folks to go to. There's also a list serve where people can sign up so that they can get regular updates around what's happening. There's been some light media, there was a news release that was developed that sort of introduced this listening effort. There was something in the Bothell Reporter today about it. And there's been some interest or some information that's been put out via the monthly e-newsletter, and we're trying to, Jennifer's been out a bit in the community as she goes out to existing events, she'll raise this topic, let people know that this is something that you are trying to get input on as you start to consider what, what the best solution is for this. So we didn't want to get too far ahead of anything, but also wanted to make sure that the community knew that this effort is going on. So that's kind of a little bit of the background around it. But most importantly, we've spent the last couple of weeks engaging the community around stakeholder interviews. And what I want to spend a little time talking about tonight is kind of what that looked like, what we heard, and what some of the next steps might be. So please feel free to ask any questions as I'm going through this. Feel free to interrupt me. I have a lot of information, because we ended up talking with 15 people in your community, about an hour per interview, so there's a lot of information. I'm going to go through it as, you know, at a pretty quick clip, but certainly can follow up with us as well as need be. So, let me see here. Okay, so we often use stakeholder interviews, which is a qualitative research technique, early in a process before we actually know a lot of information. The interviews allow for us to do a really deeper dive, one-on-one, around people's perceptions, current knowledge, priorities around specific issues. We find them to be really helpful in getting to the crux of what people know before trying to do anything else like a, either a, some type of telephone or online survey. It helps us to get messages, but helps us sort of put some framework around what people are thinking. So we worked with your staff, your city staff, to identify 15 community leaders that really represent a mix of constituencies. One nice thing about the interviews is not only are we gaining input, but we are also educating those individuals that this is a task that you are undertaking, and oftentimes they represent members, memberships or constituencies, and then they can go back to their communities and say, hey, I know Cindy is undergoing this. So it's a way of actually getting information out as well. We put together the list of folks, which will show you who they represented. We had the, the city of Bothell, Jennifer sent out an invitation inviting them to participate. This was a voluntary effort for them. We got really great response. Nearly everybody agreed to go ahead and do the interviews. We're really eager to do it. We had a couple of people that had some conflicts, so we were unable to meet with them, but it was, people were very eager to try and participate. We use, I will mention that we use an approved guide that we worked with your city staff to develop. And the, in, one of the nice things about having us participate and do the interviews versus your city staff is there's an ability for, it's confidential, and so people feel comfortable and sometimes can be a little bit more candid. So what you'll hear today are some of the themes that we heard overall. Okay, so this shows you the types of folks that we talk to, not the individuals themselves. I will mention that obviously, these are 15 people, so they are not, it's, this is not a statistically valid tool, but it does give us a sense of what the community is feeling. And oftentimes, when we do these interviews, and then if you do And oftentimes, when we do these interviews, and then if you do some sort of telephone survey or some quantitative method, there usual to be a lot of similarities around those. We really tried to engage a range of folks, so get groups from, from the faith community, from education, health, seniors, senior perspectives, get a range so that you can get a sense of what all these constituencies are feeling. Okay, so I mentioned we use an approved guide when we do these, and this gives you a sense of the types of topics that we talked with folks about. Again, we want these to be interactive and comfortable, so if people are going off in a certain direction, we usually let them do that, but we try and cover the same topics across the board, so that we have some consistencies across the interviews. We usually start a little bit more broadly, get a sense of what their knowledge is around, and what their beliefs are around the issue. So with this one, public safety, what their familiarity is, and then we get a little deeper around specific services. We also did talk with them about their feelings about solutions for some of these issues that are around public safety. And one of that is actually, is obviously a potential ballot major. So we chatted with them a little bit about that as well. I'm going to go into some pretty detailed findings, but as we go through that, I want you to think a little bit about the bigger picture of what we heard. We heard some really great things. There is, there is a really strong value for public safety services. People see them as really essential, basic services that the city provides. So they, they value them, they think the services are really good. There's a lot of respect and trust for your public safety and city leadership, which is, is really nice to hear, across the board, across police, fire and courts. We had really specific examples of things that they valued in that, and the folks that were leading those departments. So that's very, very positive. They're also, because they value the services so much, people were very interested in talking about the services and understanding and learning about them. So those are all really positive things we heard. Some of the challenges, however, is that the level of knowledge is very low, in terms of the services that are provided, and particularly the need and the challenges that you had. So all of those things that Tori has been talking about are really not on people's radar. And a lot of that, I think, is that these folks have been providing really good services and strong services, so your constituents haven't had to think about it. So the need that is there, that is there, folks don't necessarily understand or realize. I think it says in there, they take it for granted a little, they're, they're not really well-understood, particularly facility needs, and I would say court is the lowest on kind of the radar, which again, is not surprising, because it really doesn't impact or touch a lot of people. The last challenge, I think, just overall to think about as we go through the results is that we are in interesting times, as you all know. Affordability is at such a high and at such a top of mind for residents right now. We've seen a lot of tax increases, sound transits, car tab situation, the legislature changing some things with McCleary, people are really feeling and facing a pinch. And so we say often that there's no good time for some of these tax measures, this is a particularly challenging time. Okay, let's talk a little bit about, and again, I'll try and go through these fairly quickly, so just pause, tell me, tell me to stop if you need to for a minute. We want to make sure you have time for discussion and questions. So we started by asking folks a little bit about what, what makes them feel safe, what makes a community feel safe. And here are some, I'll, I'll mention that any of the italicized statements within the boxes are actual quotes from our interviews. So those are the words that your residents are using. So we heard a lot about community, a lot about family, a lot about feeling the small-town feel, even as your city continues to grow, people really value that and find that in terms of safety as being very important. I think that the visibility and engagement piece go a little bit hand in hand. Your residents really value the interaction and the visibility they see of your public safety officers out and about. They think that the, they, they named a lot of specific events that they like, they love the pancake breakfast, they like the coffee with the cop, they like the clergy and cop, they really think those things are very proactive and positive. There were a lot of comments from interviewees about the importance of that interaction during a non-emergency time. So seeing folks out and having interaction with them when they're not in crisis is really important to them. And then lastly, I'd say sort of the preparedness angle, and a lot of this, I think, was related to their own preparedness to help them feel safe, but they tie that to public safety in the sense that they see officers in the schools doing trainings, or the fire comes out and help, help, fire folks come out and help them do things. So they, they connect that. We asked folks what they perceived, or what they thought some of their community folks would perceive as top public safety issues. And some of these are some of the ones that were in Tori's slides in terms of calls. Probably not surprising to you, I think you've heard this, and some of your research traffic and parking are very top of mind. There, I think almost every interviewee raised getting around town as a challenge and a safety challenge. The issue of growth, people are starting to connect the fact that you have a growing population, and more people can cause more issues, causes more congestion, can cause more homelessness, can cause more drug addiction, all those kinds of things. The more people you have, the more of these types of things are coming. So they do understand that. Probably not surprisingly as well, there was mention of the opioid addiction and drug activity. That is becoming more on folks' radar. Similarly, homelessness is a growing concern. I would say both of those, people felt like they are a concern, but they wouldn't say that they are a level of urgency. So when we ask, kind of what are some of the issues, people would say, well, you know, I think there's more drug activity, or, yeah, I definitely see more homelessness, but it's not that bad. So it's something that they're aware of, but I wouldn't say that it's impacting them to a point where they feel like there's a huge need. Just like everywhere around the country, school safety is top, top of mind right now, I think, for folks. People valued having the school resource officers in the school and high school, and there was a desire to have them in the middle schools. I think that goes back a little bit to the thought about that visibility and presence and having kids be comfortable with having these public safety officers around when it's not a bad situation. Tori, you mentioned a little bit about the petty crimes, and I think that that is something that's more of a quality life to people, quality of life issue to people versus a real huge concern. You can see from some of the quotes, people, it's, they're aware of it, but it hasn't impacted them in a huge negative way. A couple of other things that I think come along and were mentioned when we would be talking with them about the population growth, is there is a definite awareness that there's more people in the community, and they're changing demographics, both in terms of cultural, cultural and economic issues. That wasn't a negative comment on their part, but they wanted actually your service providers to be aware of that, which might go back to a little bit of specialized staff, so that when they're going out and addressing issues, they're aware of some of the diversity that you're starting to, to get in your community. Moving a little into kind of both operations and facilities, because we talked a little with the participants about what they felt about current levels of service, how service was being provided, the facilities that your public safety folks are operating out of. There definitely, I'd mentioned before, there's really this strong appreciation for the engagement. So they like kind of that proactive nature of what they see staff doing. Again, they see it, and so I'm not sure they have this concern or see that there's a need for more of it, because they actually feel that positive nature. There's, you know, they mentioned these specific programs that, that departments have engaged in. While courts, court services and needs were really low on people's radar, youth court actually came up a couple of times. So people really valued the creative nature that that group has, has engaged in, and particularly bringing the youth into the equation was really important to folks. Tori talked a little bit about that specialized staff. These are things that were not top of mind for people, but as we walked with them and when we're talking with them in these interviews, we have prompts. So if it's, we first want to hear what they actually know and what they raise, but then if they don't bring things up, we will prompt them. And certainly, they like the idea of navigators, they like the idea of pairing with mental health folks, they get, they can understand when you talk it through, the value and the proactive nature, and how that can stop, that can be, get ahead of some of the issues that might come if you don't have it. So I mentioned that there is not a whole lot of knowledge or familiarity with services and particularly needs. Of the three that we're talking about, certainly police and fire have higher familiarity. And again, I think that is based around, it just, there's more interactions with those departments for most people, so they just are more aware of it. In speaking about kind of need, again, it wasn't something that people automatically went to, but when you talk about growth in population, changing demands on some of the staff, just those things that Tori was mentioning, people did connect the fact that, hmm, as these things continue to grow, we definitely will be, our, our current services will not be able to be sufficient. So they, they can get there, they just aren't there right away. I would add, I mentioned that there is a lot of trust and respect for the leadership in the departments. There's definitely an emotional connection that your community has to your providers, they really, they really like them. I mean, they, I would even say love, they use the word love, they really value them. And one thing that's a little bit interesting is, I think, in a lot of other communities, and certainly larger jurisdictions, police has had more of a negative image as of late. You don't feel that here. People really value the connection that your, your service providers are trying to make with your community. We can touch quickly on facilities. People really actually think your facilities are okay. They are unaware, a couple of times, folks might mention that they had heard that the fire stations were a little bit older, but for the most part, they have a vision that the facilities are in pretty good shape. Or they just don't know a lot about them. One thing we did hear is that people do put a value on technology, they understand that having good technology, having good tools in this arena is very important for people to provide good service, but they don't know if this, the facilities or the equipment is, you know, up to date and, and at the highest level. But they do value that. It's compelling to them. An interesting thing, this might not be as surprising to you, but people connected a lot of the construction that's here downtown as the city doing really, really fine, in terms of facilities. So they see a lot of development, they see the newer city hall, and they think, oh, we're fine, all the facilities are fine. So that might be the lack of knowledge about what the different areas are. One, one person thought actually city, the municipal court was in the new city hall. So misinformation and, and lack of education around some of these things, when they see a lot of the new buildings going in, they assume that the city is actually providing these services and facilities in good, good space. On the flip side, even though folks felt like, for the most part, the facilities are sufficient, people do make a connection between the appearance of particularly public safety and morale of those staff. And so they, they get that like having a really nice, clean fire truck is important and actually might make for more efficient delivery. So they do have a value on it, but again, I think a lack of knowledge about what the level of the facilities is, is a challenge. So we talked a little bit about a potential measure or measures. And some of the things that we heard is that people are pretty, pretty tax fatigued, pretty tapped out in terms of what they see in front of them. I think with these measures, I mentioned that there's, there's not usually a very good time, but, but a lot of people said, I have concerns about the timing of running something like this now, with the climate that we're in around property taxes rising and other affordability issues. The reason they raised that, I think, is that there is a concern that people are going to feel that I'm just going to say no to anything, no matter what type of measure it is, even measures that generally have a little bit more success. There is also, we heard from interviewees, that they shared a concern that this lack of sort of public safety knowledge and awareness will have, will affect the outcome of if you put something on the measure. I mentioned that folks value the services, they value the people that provide them, but at this point, they don't see a need. That's not that they, not to say that they couldn't get there, especially with education. I said they were open-minded, they want to hear about it, they value it, but at this point, they're just not, they don't have the information. And I don't think, I think part of that is because the city hasn't had to tell the story. You've been, you know, you've been providing the services, they see response, they see pretty good response. So they just continue along in their days. We did hear from a couple of folks, I'm not recommending this as an idea, but that they, they love the idea that the council is taking this direction of really trying to engage the community before a decision. That is a little bit unique. I think a lot of times jurisdictions will see that there is a need, know that there is a need, and they'll just say, we're going to, we're going to go put on the ballot, and then we're going to do the education piece after. So they appreciated the opportunity to weigh in while you're thinking about it. And they said, I love the fact that the voters are going to side, maybe just put it out there and see what the voters want to do. Use that as a tool to show that there actually is an urgent need for this, as a venue for The timing is sort of similar, I think that this just gives you a couple ideas about how people are thinking, what their quotes are around the timing of putting a tax, a tax measure on the ballot in the next near-term future. Sort of building upon the lower familiarity, people really did recommend doing a robust education initiative, kind of regardless of when and if you decide to do something like this. As we talked through and would get further along in an interview and talk through some of the needs and challenges, people were very open to hearing them and understanding of them and kind of connecting the dots. So they felt like it was really important to make sure that other residents knew what the city is facing. I'll kind of wrap a little before we just go to the last key themes. We did talk with folks about their recommendations for getting out and engaging and educating the community. And, you know, not surprisingly, some good advice is to ensure that you're using existing channels, go to where people are, which includes social media, but don't make them come to you, get out into the places where they are. Similarly, they kind of piggybacking on the theme that they're open-minded and willing, all of the participants that we talked to are really willing to help share information with their constituencies. And they provided us with some ideas around the types of groups that they think are important in this community, and, and the types of venues. A lot of these are the ones that your staff was already aware of, because they were the groups that we ended up trying to get representatives to talk to. And lastly, we just asked a little bit about, after having talked, talked with them for about an hour, what additional information or what types of information they about an hour, what additional information or what types of information they think would be important for, for them to have, to make a good choice and make an educated decision. And some of it is similar to, Deputy Mayor, you raised kind of those metrics and data about where were we 10 years ago, where are we today, what's changed in that timeframe, what hasn't changed? So they can have that same visual. A lot of the charts that Tori have are the type of information that I think they're looking for and ensuring that it is, you know, clear, easy to read, not overly burdensome for them on their time, but really plain kind of concise numbers. They're also interested and curious, not surprisingly, to understand about the steps that the city has taken and the things that have happened to try and be as efficient as possible with these services, just like I'm sure they are with any city services. So these are going to be a little bit, but I kind of want to leave you, this is a little bit of a duplication of what we just talked through, but I, I think it's good to end with some of them. And, and when Vanessa and I, when we were going through this, we sort of were like, this is a little bit of a swak in some ways. But I would just reiterate that some of the really great strengths that you have is you have really trusted, dedicated and committed leadership. And your community, at least these folks that we talked to, see that. And they were very specific about how they felt. They appreciate the services, they get that they are important, they're essential basic services, and they know that they're needed. Again, the challenges are that the awareness and knowledge is, is fairly low. You can see some of the quotes. The services are viewed as, as really strong. I was a little blown away, we asked people at the beginning of the interview to just think about those services and give the city a grade. Nobody gave lower than a B, which is fairly amazing, I think, for some, for something of this, of this type of service. Usually you'll get some folks that are a little more negative, but they really felt like the services that they're providing are really strong, and that is, is part of the challenge. And then I would add that, again, sort of all the progress that is a good thing within the city is also a little bit of a challenge because it, it can be a bit of a perception that things are in pretty good shape. And then lastly, that there are some big concerns about what folks are feeling in terms of affordability and their tax burden at this time. Lastly, a couple of key points that might be some opportunities is that because Bothell is growing so much and people recognize that there's a lot of changes, that might be an opportunity to show that there are new needs and new changes that have to be met. And lastly, I've said it a couple of times throughout this, but there really is a value that's placed on these services. They want them, they know they need them, I think they just need to understand what the climate is for you. So having heard a lot, that's a lot of information to throw at you. Some of the things that we think about after that are, you know, what more do we, what more do we hear from these, what questions are raised by it? A big one is that, just a reminder, that these are stakeholder interviews, so they're not generalizable to the whole community. And so you really would want to know, I think, a little bit about what the broader public feels. These tend to be folks that are a little more engaged, so they're going to, I mean, they're going to know more than, you know, Joe Public might. So it'd be good to get a sense of the pulse of people that aren't quite as active. We did not obviously ask about any specific packages around that. We don't know what something like that would look like, we wouldn't want to get ahead. So again, most of the discussion was based around services and operations and what they value and priorities. So I think you'd want to understand a little bit more, dig a little deeper into what some of those specific packages could look like. And then lastly, and, and I think we're getting a better vision of how and, and how best to kind of try and engage and educate folks would be. So that is really most of the information we wanted to share, but we're happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. I have a question, is there any way we can either get that presentation or do you have a report that we could get? Because I was trying to read, I can't read and listen at the same time, so I was struggling with the whole.
Absolutely. And then you can look at the, the quotes, it's really nice to see how they talk about it versus how we talk about it.
And did he have it by like, does it say interview E1, and you can see all the way through their comments and interview, interview E2?
We usually don't share all of the quotes and we, and part of that is because I think it's important to ensure that folks feel comfortable doing these. So if we were to give you everything, it might identify people a little bit more, which nobody was overly concerned about that. So we usually try and pick and clump, you know, reflective quotes into some of those themes, but we can certainly figure out a way, if you want to get more information around it, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would just be curious to read it.
Yeah.
I'd have more time to read it and think about it and stuff instead of being up here and listening.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
And yeah, not to try, if there's a way to try to keep it so I can, I'm not going to try to study who, who, I just wanted to absorb that information better.
Dive a little deeper, yeah. Sure.
Okay, questions, Councilmember Ragno?
I noticed a number of times in your presentation, it talked about response times and how the response times were adequate. What are response times now?
What are the response times?
Yeah.
I don't know the answer to that, but I'm sure that your public safety experts do.
We are working on that. We kind of ran into a snag with our records management system with the response times, first NORCOM versus a new Code 3 system we have. And we switched vendors from Firehouse to...
ESO.
ESO, thanks, I S over here. And, and in doing so, we are trying to get some of these numbers transposed. Right now, we're working on that, we will get that solved, so I can't give you an answer on that right now. But I will have that soon. We are working on that very, very diligently, and we're going to have that within the next week or two, we can get that out.
Okay, thanks, Chief. You know, I, I think it was nice that the public is recognizing, as well as I think every, all the public safety experts are, is that our demographics are changing, and with that comes special needs. I, I think if you'd have questioned anybody in the police or fire 20 years ago about them having a social worker riding with them, they would have probably laughed at you. And now we're finding out that that's probably a good place for them. In, in fact, I was meeting today and we were talking about putting a social worker, MHP, on the fire department's rigs there, and I said, well, you know, it's a great idea, but let's not bounce heads. If police already have them out there, you know, let's, let's use the places too, so, you know, and I see that being something that's going to happen in the future, you know, with, with the way the, everybody's moving in that direction anyway. But thank you, it was a great presentation, I appreciated it.
Well, and I'll just add with your question about response times, I think one of the things that we are trying to get a sense is even, what is their perception? Do they perceive that they're getting services in a reasonable amount of time, right? The responses are appropriate? And certainly what we heard was that folks don't see that as a problem. But, you know, then you can go along in the discussion and say, well, do you want to wait until it is a problem to address it? Most people would probably say no.
No.
Right?
Any other questions, Councilmembers Orange?
I, I'm sure what I'm going to be asking you is just spitting back what you said to us. My impression was, from what you just told us, is that addressing our growth issues or, or using our growth issues would be the tipping point for most everybody to understand the need for us to, to fortify our public safety? Is that most, is growth most compelling to folks?
I don't, I don't think growth is most compelling to folks. I don't think there's anything that's most compelling to all folks, but I think it's part of the equation. I think people can understand that as population is growing, there is stresses on demands.
Okay.
Now, there is also the fact that people will say, well, as we have more people coming in, they're paying taxes too, and so shouldn't that help pay for it? So I think the growth is one side, but the, the, the changing demands that Tori has talked a bit about is also a really important thing.
Okay.
So I wouldn't say there's a silver bullet on anything, but I think that one of the things we really heard is that people are unaware of some of these challenges that the city is facing in delivering these services.
So growth pulls in a changing of demands dynamic that maybe would resonate with people more?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, you did a lot of work.
In a short amount of time.
I'm curious, you showed a lot of the affiliations that people that you interviewed have, and as you said, people that have those affiliations tend to be more educated. Were, were there any people that you would call kind of your average citizen in that stakeholder group?
Yeah, there were. There were a couple of folks that I think were less kind of engaged in overall community activities, so they represented a constituency, but you know, there were some folks that were volunteers for this and volunteers for that and somewhat active, and those are the type of people that you generally want to talk to because they have the pulse of other folks in the community. So when we're talking with them, they may say like, oh, there's my knowledge, but I've also heard, you know, that so-and-so thinks this or folks think that. But there were one or two that I think would be considered a little less knowledgeable around those issues, and those were sort of interesting interviews Vanessa could even say too, because they tend to fall a little flatter because they just don't have as much information. But that's helpful information, too.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious if you saw with those people any themes versus the knowledge?
Lack of knowledge.
Just lack, general lack of, lack of knowledge.
Yeah, but also comfort with, with the situation, I would say.
Okay. Interesting.
But, but I could look a little more closely to really pull those two or so out.
Yeah, it would be interesting to see if there's anything to find there.
Yeah.
The other, I had another question, I'm trying to remember. When you asked questions, so there was no education prior to the questions, there were just the straight-up questions. So in other words, when you asked people about the facilities, it's not as though they were given photos of those facilities at all, they just had to recall?
No. And then, but then we'll try and talk a little bit because obviously we've had conversations with the department staff and Tori has filled us in. So the guide usually starts like, you say, well, what do you think about facilities? Or what do you know? And they'll say whatever there is of top of mind, and we'll say, well, you know, do you know that some of the facilities may be a little older or there's space constraints, you know, so we can raise some of those things? And, and I think part of what we hear is people are open to those concerns and hear them, so they actually are like, well, that doesn't sound so good, especially because they care about their providers, and so they want them to be in facilities that are good and able for them to produce and provide the services that the residents need.
Okay. And then in terms of the tax fatigue question, I get the sense, and I just want to know if I'm reading it correctly, that the majority of people that you interviewed felt that it was not a good time. So in other words, for any measure of any size, or did you get down to that level of detail?
We didn't get into that level of detail. And I don't know that I would say the majority would say it's not a good time, they have concerns about timing. So they raised that, that was one of the first things that is top of mind when you say, what do you think about, you know, the city considering putting a measure? They would say, ugh, it's just a, it's a tough climate right now. But we didn't say like, well, what if it was more for operations or more for, we did not go into that kind of detail.
Were they speaking for them, for themselves or for their feel of what the public would think? You know what I'm saying?
I do, both. I would say probably more of the folks are supportive of getting the services that are needed, but they feel in the community, they hear even themselves, folks have something like, you know, my car tub's one up this much, my property assessment has gone up this much, so everybody is feeling it. But I do think it also is just the general vibe in the community.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the other, the other thing that is somewhat unfortunate, and I think you mentioned it a little bit, is that we're almost a victim of our own success in just dealing really well with what we have, which is a little bit unfortunate, but I mean, it speaks to the, the people that are providing those services for our community. So, great, well, thank you, that was really informative.
And I guess I would just, you know, Vanessa, do you have any other, I don't think I'm mischaracterizing that in terms, I would say for me, a bigger concern, I mean, the climate of the tax affordability, the affordability and tax increases big, but I think the bigger thing is even in good times, you want people to think there's a need. Otherwise, even if they're flush with money, why do they want to pay for something if they don't think there's a need?
Absolutely.
So I think that is a really important thing. On top of it, you're in a little challenging situation. But on the positive sides, people value the services, and if they understand there is a need, I think they could get there.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
There it is. Thank you for your presentation. I thought, I found it not surprising because I think people feel pretty comfortable that this is their community, their hometown, they love Bothell, they like the people, and I can go to the grocery store and see the firemen, talking to the kids, you know, I can, I see this touch truck kind of thing, you know?
Yeah.
So they feel comfortable. And, and so my big take out of this would be, what would it take to actually educate the public? I mean, obviously, we're not, the story is not being told of the city's need. The budget transparency might be a piece of that, maybe to actually have people understand the budget and how it works. They don't see an opiate crisis or homelessness crisis at all, although it's there, but most of people don't see it. And I think the biggest one that you talked about, actually, there's two, and that was traffic and parking and lack of enforcement. That was a, that's a really big deal, you can hear it everywhere. And, you know, needs for school resource officers. I think that's another really big one that people care about. But on the other hand, I want to know how we educate them, here's all these new apartments and new buildings and new people, and there's new taxes, why doesn't that compensate for what we see as growth is causing problems? And so we need more resources. So I think they have to understand the budget. I don't know what else to say, because obviously even the ones that you were talking to did not understand the budget.
Yeah, I, I don't have a perfect answer for you today. Well, I probably would never have a perfect answer for you, but I, I think you need to also just go back to the safety piece. I think that they value feeling safe, they value the safety that they feel now, and I think they can understand that, and especially if they start to see data that's showing these things are going up, our staffing is staying the same, I think that reasonable minds can actually understand that. And so, but, but it's going to take time and effort to get out and go to where people are and have them participate in some of this. But I think you, I don't know that you have to get really into the weeds in terms of the budget and who does what, but I think that you need to get some good informational facts that show that things cannot continue, that, that these folks cannot continue to provide these services without additional resources. I don't know if that's, that answered it.
Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you. Well, this was fabulous, it was great having this presentation. It's often, we don't know what we don't know, right?
Yeah.
And I've heard you mention a couple of words, education, people not being engaged, having proper communication, and telling the story, and telling the story is telling a proactive story. So Councilmember McAuliffe brought up a, a great point about educating, and I think there's no better group of people to educate the community than us, the leaders, the, the public safety officer, the, the police, the fire. We have the opportunity to engage within our community, understand what people are looking for. I took out of the 15 people that took this, that you surveyed, that you engaged with, were leaders within our community.
I think so.
Do those leaders live within our community?
I think the majority did. We had one or two that said they worked within the community but lived outside of the city of Bothell. but lived outside of the city of Bothell. But they were still fairly active, and they, they represented a constituency that I think they had a fairly good sense. So yes, most. And actually, it was kind of interesting to have a perspective of somebody that maybe didn't live there, but worked in the city, to see what their, if there was any differences in how they responded.
Okay. Did you guys have any conversations around what people felt the amount, let's just talk about property taxes. How much of a property tax goes to a city versus to the county or the state?
No.
Any conversations around that?
No.
So that might be an interesting conversation for people to know how little we actually get off of those taxes and how much we actually do with that money.
Agreed.
So that, that might be a good, good conversation to start having. You talk a lot about tax fatigue. We hear a lot about that regionally, several committees, things like that, we hear about tax fatigue. My curiosity, once again, is, I know, because I'm sitting here, how much of my taxes go to the city. I know that I would be, I want public safety, you know, I got kids, I want to make sure that I'm safe, I want to make sure I live in a safe community. But again, if our head's down and we don't know what we don't know, we're probably going to say no to something like that. Well, we're doing fine, right? So the tax fatigue thing is, is interesting to me, that they brought that up as much as they did. Do you, do you sense that that's a real?
A real thing.
A real issue that...
It was raised a lot.
Yeah, sounds like it was.
I mean, remember that some of this feedback is, could be perception, right? But it is what people perceive. So whether it's accurate or not, it's what they perceive. There certainly is a lot of attention in the media, and you said regionally, I think for sure, but it was raised by every stakeholder.
So I think, you know, just kind of listening to you talk about that and making sure that we educate on the element of how much and how much it's going to do for us, being fiscally responsible. I agree with the Councilmember McAuliffe on the budget piece. It might be a way for us to somewhat educate on how little we get from those taxes, how, how much we do with them during that budget process. But, but in closing, I guess I would say that again, I think we have a great opportunity to go out into our community proactively, make sure our community knows what our needs are for public safety, how much we can do with how little we get, and ensure that we continue that message long-term. Because again, as we continue to grow, the needs are not going to stop.
Right.
After this levy, there's going to be additional levies. And I think that we can use the momentum and the proactive way we go about doing things.
That's right.
To continue to educate our community. And I think education in the community is an important thing, long-term, so.
Across all services, probably, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Agreed.
So you're going to get up, and we're going to give more direction and things later, right? Okay, just wanted to, is there any other questions for the outreach efforts? Is it the correct term, or is it public engagement?
I think you could call it a lot of things. I mean, one thing to think about is particularly as a role of the city, you can educate and engage. So versus advocacy, you can provide facts and information.
Yeah, that was the best thing I heard. Well, I grab onto things, but that was one of the things I heard that was good that we did, is that we're, we're out there right now trying to do some public engagement ahead of time. Because, yeah, once we flip the switch over to there's a levy, if we do that.
You can still educate, and it's important to still educate, but you can't advocate. Your attorney can speak more to that.
Oh, yeah, he'll, he'll let me know if I cross the line. So is there any other questions from council? We'll move back to Tori.
Thank you again for that opportunity, we appreciate it.
And then Tori, are you going to, how much longer are we going to go for? Because we're about at our break time.
Yeah, I think I have about five slides, but there's probably a lot of discussion that goes from that, so.
So how's council feeling? Do you guys want to take a break, or do you want to slog through the rest of this? Break? I see some breaks over here. Okay. So we're going to take a break. We'll come back at 8:05. All right?